Okay, it is 8:30. Welcome to the March 1st meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Sheriff Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
Vice Chair Weymeyer.
President.
Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the public. You may be seated. All right, do we have any correspondence or organizational business today?
No ma'am.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes.
All right, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
State my name and all that good stuff.
Yes, please.
Sabrina Metter, 3404 California Road, Pomona. Anyways, I just wanted to, I guess, comment on, a comment in the last meeting about the pers- I don't know the right words, but what we're going to send to the planning committee to have them decide on having a moratorium for the wind or solar. And I know in the meeting you guys were discussing or made comments about it mainly just being for wind, but we would like to add solar into that as well, just because I feel that some of the zoning regulations could be tweaked to make it be better for everyone in the county. It was implied to me at the last planning meeting because I did not attend all those meetings in 2019 that I should not have a say because I didn't attend those meetings. But I have made up for it and have read all the minutes to those meetings. And I highly suggest if you guys haven't or wasn't present at any of those, to do that because there's a lot of good information in them from who, the companies they use to help make the regulations. There was good information, you know, mainly on the foreside of it, and it was mainly geared towards solar. But I just have concerns about a few of the, especially setbacks, mainly just allowing the non-participating landowner to have a say as well. So one of the things with solar in particular was a 250-foot setback from residential, non-participating residential, and then 40-foot setback from all the other property lines. So I feel that a non-participating landowner should have the option to have that 250-foot setback on all of their property. But maybe, and I don't know, this gets, where it gets a little messy, if that landowner doesn't care that this is 40-foot from my property line over here, then allow it, but give that person the option. Because a lot of the things I heard when people would come in and talk, when it was mainly about wind, is, well, why is this person going to allow this? And then I can't build a house in certain areas, or whatever. Because a lot of people do want to split up their land, like to give to kids, to build homes on, and things like that. So that's kind of where I feel that it, the moratorium, or the prospects of having that needs to be for both wind and solar, and not just wind. But I don't know if, you know, exactly what was going to be presented and put on the agenda for the planning committee. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Our consent agenda, I need to pull that up. Consent agenda for today is claim vouchers in the amount of $210,216.70, tax change orders in the amount of minus $290.10, payroll in the amount of $1,303,868.92, and minutes from the meeting, the February 22nd meeting. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. Thank you.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer.
Yes.
Sheriff Dickinson.
Yes. And our first item of business is to approve a budget adjustment for receiving unexpended funds from KDOC, Mr. Dustin Browning. How are you doing?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm well. How are you?
Good.
This morning, we have for your approval a budget adjustment for us receiving unexpended funds. That was a pleasant surprise for us. That doesn't typically happen. But there were some unexpended funds from the Department of Corrections, and those were distributed out to eligible community corrections agencies, and we were one of those. So we received $27,362.52. And so there is an adjustment process for this to put it between two line items, and that's what we're seeking your approval on today. Anytime we have any budget adjustments that total more than $5,000, we have to have your approval. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
I would think this is unusual. This is kind of cool.
Yes.
We have money left over. Here it is.
Right.
Motion to approve.
Sorry?
Second.
All right. Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Sheriff Dickinson.
Yeah.
Thank you. While we have Dustin up here, him and I have had several conversations about the juvenile detention center and ways in which the county could utilize that. He's actually put together, you know, it's simple, but it's a pretty good little drawing in terms of how his department could use it, which would then potentially free up some space over here in the annex. Certainly, we can talk about that anytime. We plan to have it on an upcoming study session, but just wanted you to know that we're definitely taking a proactive approach to that, and I'm excited about the possibilities for community corrections in that space.
Awesome. All right, we'll look forward to it.
Thank you. Thanks, Dustin.
All right, our second item of business, consider approving a proposal from Kilo Construction in the amount of $23,733.60 to mill and overlay the north and south approaches to the West Wilson Street Bridge. Mr. David Lee.
Yes, Commissioners, we have been, we have been monitoring this bridge for a while now. This particular bridge, while not very old, has concrete approaches to the bridge deck. While the bridge deck has support down to bedrock, the concrete approaches are basically just sitting on fill material. That fill material has settled, causing the edges next to the, to the bridge to shove down. And so there's quite a coming in and out off of the bridge. It's very rough. And I would venture to guess that anybody pulling a trailer is starting to have some, some issues right there. I had the, the folks with CFS Engineering come out and, and take a look at it. There's nothing structurally wrong with the bridge. The bridge is fine, which is, is key, but the, we need to do something with the approaches. The solutions that were presented were, one, to either mudjack underneath the slab to kind of level it up, or do what we do on, on most bridges in the county where we have approach issues. In fact, last year, whenever we did the overlay job, we took care of a number of these around the county where we had issues coming in, coming into the bridge and off of bridges. And so our recommendation is to do something very similar, and that would be to put asphalt to smooth that transition. That would be something that, you know, we will probably do again someday. It's not a permanent fix, but then, and I'm not sure mudjacking would be a permanent fix either in this scenario. And so our recommendation is to move forward with milling out a header on each end of the, the approach, and, and then adding the asphalt to smooth that transition so that it's a much safer traveling, you know, for the public coming through there. Yeah, so this is, this is what we've done, and, and this is what we would recommend moving forward.
Any questions for David?
I got several comments on the bridges you did fix. People really appreciate fixing those bridge approaches. And makes a, it makes a huge difference for the traveling public whenever they're crossing those structures.
Who did the, the viewing, the construction, the inspector, who was the inspector?
It was Cook, Flatt, and Strobel.
What do they think happened? I mean, obviously, it's settling, but it's a new road. They had-
Yeah, it, it's, it's got to do with the fill material. In fact, when we had them come back out and, and look at this, one of the comments was, nobody does this anymore. KDOT doesn't allow concrete approaches to their structures, and, and so nobody in the state is designing-
But it's not the, I mean, actually, it's kind of amazing that the approach held together. It's the sub-material.
Yeah.
So is it, was it, they're saying it's a failure of the material, not the process?
Right.
Is it just salty?
I don't have that specific information. We're not seeing necessarily cracking on the slab.
Yeah, there's no lateral crack or nothing, which would make you think the sides are going-
It's really just sinking on one side and causing the other-
Buttresses, yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, on a gravel road, we wouldn't have, we, we'd have gravel approaches. On, on paved services, which is what we've got in, in the county, and just like I mentioned, we have a number of these where this, this happens next to those abutments, and we're able to go in and overlay that to smooth it out periodically. Some of them, we've done multiple times through the years.
Well, as unfortunate as it is to be spending this on a relatively new bridge, I guarantee taking all that material away and hauling it in would have been far more, so.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I also, you know, we are getting ready to replace a bridge, you know, less than a mile away from this. And I have already spoken with KDOT and, and our engineers, and I plan to visit with the contractors that I'd rather have them avoid this bridge hauling concrete. It's close enough, they can drive around. And we've got another bridge on West Wilson Street that's not, not in the best shape either. So I want to keep them off of that if at all possible.
All right, there's no other questions or, affirmative action would be to, I make a motion to approve a proposal from Kilo Construction in the amount of $23,733.60 to mill and overlay the north and south approaches to the West Wilson Street Bridge. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Sheriff Dickinson.
Yes. And our last order of business today is to consider for approval Resolution 23-10 directing Stevenson Brand LLP to institute a judicial tax foreclosure action in the District Court of Franklin County. Derek Brown.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for months. This is the, a formal step necessary to get the actual lawsuit filed. Jeff Hyman with Stevenson Brand has done the last several of these. He has great rapport with, with the folks in the community that assist us with this. The proceeds from the sale pay his fees, and so it doesn't cost the taxpayers. It's a great deal all around. So gladly answer questions, but this is a step we've taken every year we've done this, so.
Any questions? Okay, then, an affirmative would be, I make a motion to approve Resolution 23-10 directing Stevenson Brand LLP to institute a judicial tax foreclosure action in the District Court of Franklin County, Kansas.
So I move.
Commissioner Weymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Sheriff Dickinson.
Yes. And that moves us on to staff reports.
Let's start with Derek.
Yeah, thank you. Been having discussions with Paul Bean about Crestview. So you all will recall, obviously, that Historical Society used to be located out there. We moved them out to the visitor's center. We've largely moved the records out of there, so Crestview's just sitting there. We know that in this community, we need daycares. And so Paul has been talking to a daycare developer who has some interest in that property. They are also going to potentially work with another developer on another site, and so we're kind of waiting to see if, if that's going to work. Point being, though, that there's definitely some interest in Crestview for that purpose. We don't know what that looks like. I, I can't imagine them wanting that structure as it sits, but you all might start thinking about what you would be willing to do if it meant helping fill a need that frankly, this community desperately needs. So Paul can happily come up and discuss that more if you have specific questions. But as we start to get some more details, we'll certainly be back in front of you. But more than anything, just want you to think about, is that land something that you would be willing to give away, sell? If so, what's the price? Like, just start having those thoughts and, and feel free to reach out with Paul and I with any questions that you might have about that.
Dustin, do you have anything else?
Well, I, I, I thought you were looking at-
Oh, no, I was, okay, okay.
I don't know how many times we've heard, either from businesses themselves, from people that work at the businesses, and studies have been done, childcare, childcare, childcare. That's the biggest need. And one thing about, if we did put money or resources, whatever it was, towards, towards that, it wouldn't just help a business. It would be like writing a check to a business. It would really help the, the employees, the, the people. And that's one beautiful thing about the idea of that, as opposed to, you know, writing it, kind of what Coffee County did, their big old check to a business, which obviously will have good effects for people who live there, but.
The whole thing is, though, that whenever you think of Crestview, you think of that building behind there. You still, you know, it's like the elephant in the room. You've got to figure out what you're going to do with the, anyway, eventually.
That's a detail that, that we could get figured out. But I, I certainly agree with Colt. This, this is something that could help the community. I could argue in so many ways. Help our own organization. Help us retain employees. We talk about folks that leave the community. Well, a lot of that is just, we need certain things. We need more houses. We need daycare. And so to the extent that we could help out with that, I think we should be willing to think aggressively about that.
Folks that are already here and already paying taxes.
Yep, that's exactly right. Probably about time, and I'll defer to the five of you on this, but for another photo, a group photo, we try to do those about every other year. We think we may be able to do one next week. Any interest in that?
Were you in, were you, were you in the last one? Have you been in one?
I think so.
I, I'm not sure we've changed since the last one.
Okay. Well, we used to do them every other year. I'm certainly not going to push. Like, if it's not anything you guys need, then it's, that is A-OK with me.
I wouldn't do it unless-
Okay.
Unless-
Good enough. There's a change.
Church is new.
Yeah, good enough. Well, if Rod's been in one, and we can verify that, then we'll-
Yeah, I mean, if Rod's been in one, then I don't think we've changed anything.
Okay, perfect.
It's gotten older.
And, and then the last thing, March 3rd, which is Friday, is National Employee Appreciation Day. And certainly, we're doing a little something for our employees, but do want to take the opportunity to just, to just express how valuable our people are. Everything that we do is predicated on having good, reliable employees. And, and we're so thankful in this organization that we have them. I mean, these are the people that are, they are dedicating their time, their, their, so much of their life to make this organization work. And so I know that I appreciate them. I know that my department heads appreciate them. I hope that all of you do. And I hope that you all give considerable weight to our staff and their recommendations on things, given that we are the ones that are here every single day doing this. And we are interested in the well-being of the entire county and not just random segments of it. So appreciate our employees, appreciate everything they do. Can't say enough good things about them. So thank you.
All right. Now, Dustin know? Yeah, awesome.
I do have a couple of things that I'd like to share this morning. First, even though we are nearing the end of fiscal year '23, we have our statistics from fiscal year '22, and I wanted to share those with you all. On the adult side of our operation, we are still supervising around 200 active adult felony offenders on any given day. We had our success rate for the year, and when we look at success rate on adult offenders completing probation, that is folks who are not revoked and sent back to prison, that success rate in fiscal year '22 was right at 70%, and that is mirroring the statewide average. We would like that to be higher, and in years past, it has been higher. But fiscal year '22 brought the, the kind of the end of the pandemic. We had a lot of staff turnover. We had a lot of issues that we were facing. So 70% is still a pretty good success rate for where we were. On the juvenile side of our operation, that rate was actually a little bit lower, closer to 60%. But the other thing I wanted to share this morning is that in fiscal year '24 coming up, there are some grant opportunities that we have not applied for before, that we will be pursuing to try to bolster some of these things, both on the adult and juvenile side. So when I come before you in the next month or two, we'll have some discussions on what those grants look like and what kind of programs we hope to offer. So with that, I'll stand for any questions you all might have.
You just tell us that you, the four jurisdictions gave, you had with 200 every day, someone?
Yep, across the four counties. Most of those clients, about half, are from Franklin County specifically. But if you look at the population of the four counties, Franklin, Anderson, Coffee, and Osage, that about mirrors the general population as well. Franklin County makes up about half of that population. So the bulk of our clientele are here in Franklin County. But throughout the four counties in the district, we see about 200 active clients a day. Now, that's not counting the inactive ones. There are folks who have absconded from supervision. There are folks who are in jail. There are folks who are just on some sort of administrative status that can come back to being active supervision at any time. So 200 is, is just the kind of the baseline there. And we have about four staff that see those 200 folks every day. Yeah.
Mental health, that always seems to be, is that, I mean, something that I'm sure you're addressing, but what kind of programs do you have for mental health?
That is one area that we are continuing to lack in our organization. We have a partnership with the Elizabeth Layton Center, and we do have a case manager that resides in our office. It's an ELC employee, but they are there on site with us, and they do mental health services, and can, and refer to other mental health services if it's beyond her scope. So we do have that partnership. It's been going on for many years, and it's very successful. Win clients take advantage of it, and we encourage those clients to take advantage of it. But really, that's about the only thing. We want to do some more cognitive programming with our clients to get them to think differently, to get them to see things a little bit differently. But that is one of the areas through the last couple of years that's been tough, coming out of the pandemic.
Ian, I will tell you that, and certainly there's any number of folks in the room that can, can echo this, but mental health, we had a department head meeting last week, and that was the, the talking point, the discussion, is mental health and mental health in this community, and what can we do as an organization, if anything, to help that. And, and some of that was born out of discussions we've had on our opioid committee, and what we feel leads to drug-seeking behavior, which certainly we believe to be mental health issues. And so those are conversations that we're having, and there, there is a desire from me and, and the team to look at what we can do to, to help the community. Is that just starting to talk about it, starting the discussion, trying to alleviate the stigma associated with talking about mental health issues? And so that is something that, that is very much on our radar, and we'll continue our discussions about that.
Everybody talks about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for Justin? Thank you. Paul, anything today? All right, Sheriff?
Good morning. I just wanted to update you on a system that we have in the jails called a Guardian system. It is an electronic-type system. It's a way for us to, what we used to do is we had a thing, we just, we called it, affectionately, the pipe. There was a little disc outside each cell. You'd kind of scan that to show that you did your jail checks. This is a more enhanced system. Each inmate has an ID, has a photo ID issued to them. We scan that ID anytime that they are given their medications, anytime they're given their food, if they refuse, anything like that. Every time they see, they, any action that they do, visit, visitations with their, their attorneys or anything like that. So it's an enhanced system that's going to really allow us to, to provide a higher level of service and, and provide those reports out for what it is that we're actually doing. So we can run reports on that. It should help us in the long run with things. It's a, just a good way to keep, to, to, to do business. And the best part about that is that we did not spend any taxpayer dollars on this at all. This is all paid for the jail trust, which is from, so basically, the inmates are paying for, for this system to happen. So it's a really good system, and I wanted to thank Dustin and his, his guys for their work in helping get all this, help get it installed and get things up and running. So we're, we're very pleased with it, and Dustin can tell you, and I've told you many times, I'm not a technology guy, but when it works right, and it is something that will enhance the way that we're able to do things. Hopefully, it's going to cut down a lot of the time on, that it takes for us to do some of our reporting and some of our, some of the chores that we have to do. So I think it's going to be a good thing overall for our staff and, and the inmates alike. So, and that's all I really have, unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Go ahead and provide you a few more software project updates, since the sheriff started it. So I don't think there's a whole lot that you're not already familiar with on the Pub Works. That project was completed. David is already giving you some of the reports that he's starting to get, and I think he'll still continue to fine-tune some of the things he's looking for. But effectively, for me, that project is completed. Fiddler is kind of the next one up. That's the one that is for our Recorder's Office or the Registered Deeds Office. It is currently at a state that they've got training scheduled next week, and we expect to go live later this month. So workflows have all been provided. We're excited about that going. They are reaching out to some of our current customers, whether that's the title companies, anybody that's currently a fee user on the systems that we have now, and then some others that come into the office to get copies and different things like that, to get them set up for some online training sessions, question-and-answer sessions, so that they'll be comfortable whenever we go live later this month as well. The financial management piece, ERP Pro, we're currently at a early stage with that. A project manager's been assigned. We're starting to talk about the SS and Define stage, which is the second stage of Tyler's project pieces. They do a six-stage from start to sign-off. So we're currently in that second stage. And the reason why I'm talking about that is because we are now at stage two in every one of those projects. So even though that's at the beginning, while we're starting to discuss hard dates, deadlines, for an example, we've asked that, we tried to have it, the financial management piece ready to go, so payroll can start January 1 on the new system. They feel that is a very reasonable hard date to set. And the Intergov or the EPL, that's impacting the Planning and Zoning Office, we're about four meetings into the SS and Define stage with that. We're doing a lot of work sessions and actually converting our weekly project meeting over to, instead of a one-hour project meeting, we're now doing a two-hour work session on Thursday afternoons with that. Myself, Pat, and Dee primarily, along with the Tyler folks. We're currently in a, developing what's called a unique process, and we've selected the commercial new structure process for that one. Pat felt that was going to be one of the more complex ones to go through, so we wanted to let Tyler handle that and learn how that process to develop these workflows goes. We still have to define- We still have to define the templated process or template business process. That's going to be something that's a little bit more common, that we can apply to multiple pieces. That will take care of a lot of Tyler function. Franklin County staff will be responsible for creating out all these others that we do. So we picked the commercial new structure, but a residential new structure will be one that we work on and we do internally. But they take us through their training program to prepare us to be able to do that. Tax Assessment Pro, again, fairly early. We've done, we've got a project manager signed. We've done a kickoff meeting with the Appraisers Office on that. This is the personal property side of this, oil and gas. I did have a quick conversation last week with Douglas County, since they did a summer project, hoping that there was things we could take from them. I'm going to follow up on that conversation. They were, they were migrating from a different omentum product than what we were. So some of the tools they used won't serve us anything. But I do, I do plan to go meet with their IT Director. She is fairly new as well. And kind of talk about things that they felt were the gotchas in the project for them. So we can be aware of that as we go down that piece. But that is really at a point of, kind of a, kind of like the ERP Pro side. They are at just the very early stages of the SS and defined. So I feel good that all three of the Tyler pieces are in that stage. The Fiddler project is at a point where we should be going live with that later this month. And PubWorks is done. So I feel good about all the software projects. We're on, on schedule, on budget. So feel good about all of them right now. Stand for any questions about any of them.
I would just say you have a couple of new department heads also. So they're doing, not only are they new department heads, but they also are learning new software, so.
Yes.
Kudos to them for just sticking in, getting there. And thanks for all your help.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, David Lee?
All right, I'll stick with the software theme.
All right.
Giving you an update of the February numbers. So in February, we worked on 552 road segments, that's plating. We had 48 locations where we did spot plating, 59 different locations where we added gravel. We had 38 brush and tree removal projects, 11 culvert-related projects, six ditching, 95 sign-related projects. Some of these numbers are down a little bit from January. That's partially due to weather. And we had, we had an inordinate number of equipment issues, which really hindered our ability to haul rock. We're, I think we're coming out the end of that, so that is good. We also have one blade operator that's been out basically for a month with health issues, which has caused two other blade operators to take over that district. And so they're, they've increased their workload, which has an effect also. From a service request standpoint, since we implemented the software right around Thanksgiving of last year, we have received 252 service requests. That's internal service requests. That's our staff seeing things and submitting requests, and then citizens as well. Of those, 252, we have finished or closed 130 of those, which means we've got 122 that are outstanding. Of those service requests that, that have come in, 50 of them have been ditching and drainage related, 39 sign-related, 42 culvert-related, and 44 road-related. These, I think, are all pretty standard. Just didn't have the ability to track them like we do today. And so I'm very thankful for the PubWorks software. And we will continue to ramp up our use as we learn and grow and, and adapt our processes to fully utilize the software. And then the last thing I'll say is that we've got a number of employees that are going to be taking part in LTAP training programs over the next few months. These training programs include classes on asphalt road maintenance, bridges, workplace, job site, and equipment safety, and then gravel road maintenance. And we, we will be active this year in, in seeking out additional training opportunities for our staff.
How are you doing employer-wise? Are we full?
Currently, we, currently we are. We, we've got, I mentioned the one person that's out due to health. We've got a couple of others that are going to miss some extended time coming up. And then we have a number of retirements. Two of them have submitted paperwork and, and a couple of others, three or four others are, keep talking about it, but we haven't seen official paperwork. So we're trying to make plans for that. We've got one retirement coming at the end of this month, at the end of March. And so we've got that already advertised and seeking applications. It's a light equipment operator position. So we're trying to be ahead of that and hopefully have somebody in place by the time the retirement occurs. So.
All right. Janet?
Well, we're on training today. So just as Dustin said, we've got a lot of training coming up in the courthouse for the new software projects. The Registered Deeds Office will have limited hours next week because they're going to be doing extensive training on their project. I believe they're going to be closed on Monday through Thursday from 8 to noon while they train on their new software. So they'll just be open in the afternoons to the public next week. Also, in the Clerk's Office, we hope to have our new staff member joining us next week. And if she is able to start next week like we planned, then she'll be in the Registered Deeds Office training on their software with them. Because as you know, I have a staff member that helps out in the Registered Deeds Office. So we're hoping to get her over there to get her trained up on their new software right out of the gate with them. Also, I have two staff members that will be off-site for a training next week specific to Clerk's Office duties, tax, and other things that is our, and one of our annual trainings that we have. And then Marilyn from the Treasurer's Office and I will be doing the financial management initial software training next week that will happen over the course of three days. And it'll be the majority of those three days, we'll be in the office still. But we'll be doing that training from the office. So lots of training going on at the courthouse next week.
Well, we're talking about that. I have a question for you. Do, did we have two people in the Registered Deeds Office? Did we have a new hire? Because we moved Vicky up, right? So there's still two people in there? Okay, awesome, all right.
Yeah, so when Vicky took the position of Register of Deeds, she did a process to look for a new deputy. And she hired Angie Hook, who was working in my office at the time and was their person that was filling in over there. So Angie already had knowledge of their systems and everything. And it was a good fit for her to just move over there. So Angie started over there on February 1st in the Registered Deeds Office full-time. So we've been looking for someone else in my office. And they're supposed to be going through all their pre-employment stuff this week and hopefully be ready to start next week.
Awesome, awesome, all right. All right, Commissioner reports. Don, nothing?
I don't have anything.
All right.
I just want to reiterate what Derek said about our employees. I really appreciate all the employees from Franklin County. And really appreciate their patience and eagerness to learn their new software and implement it. So I thank all our, all our employees. That's all I have.
Colt?
Last Wednesday, I was in Topeka at the KAC Board meeting. This time of year, a lot of the meeting is just dealing with the new legislation that might or might not come down from our legislators in Topeka. And how important it is for us to stay in contact with our legislators. On Thursday, I represented the county at the Government Day for the Chamber Leadership Class. Told them all our secrets, so it's all out, guys. And then I had a hospital board meeting. A lot of that was just, continue to have some concerned citizens that are, still have questions about the hospital and the way all, everything comes anyway. So they answered a lot of those questions. And pretty much the report that they gave to the Commissioners a couple of weeks ago. And then a chamber coffee on Friday morning at the Keith King State Farm Office. He's been State Farm agent in our community for, I think, 21 years since 20, from, anyway. And then Commissioner Harris and I last night attended a meet and greet for the city manager applicants. It's kind of a different way they did it. You just kind of walked around and visited with, they had four that were there. And they're going to be meeting today, hopefully. It's been a long process, and I think the Commissioners are ready to pick somebody. So hopefully, we'll know who's going to be stepping into those shoes at the end of the month. I was just encouraging them to find somebody that is ready to, I figure out how this community is going to grow, because it's going to grow one way or the other. So hopefully, we have a plan for it. Anyway, that's all I have. We don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.